Welcome, everyone, to the Monday, November 16th work session. We'll get started. Shelley, if you would. Do we do roll call? We don't do roll call? Okay. So, the first thing we'll do is we'll go to item number two on the agenda, which is the discussion on the sanctioning process for mixed martial arts events by the South Dakota Athletic Commission. Do we have? You have to excuse me, I didn't get your name. The mayor will be back shortly, he had to step out.
That's fine.
Yep. That's the hot seat.
It's got a lot of arrows on it, must be.
Okay. Could you introduce yourself to him?
Certainly. My name is Jennifer Staley, and I serve as the Executive Secretary for the South Dakota Athletic Commission. And for those of you who don't know, the Athletic Commission is five members appointed by the governor. We currently have a Commissioner from Spearfish, Dr. Richard Little, who's an orthopedic surgeon, a Commissioner from Belle Fouch, Mike Kilmer, who is a former boxer, a Commissioner from Sioux Falls, his name is Lee Loef, he is a former MMA competitor. And then our fourth Commissioner is Margaret Gillespie, who is an attorney in Beersford. Our fifth spot is currently vacant and awaiting appointment. A little bit of a disclaimer, if I could, before I start, the Athletic Commission is not here tonight to advocate one way or another on how you, as a city council, interpret your ordinance. There is a specific provision in the administrative rules of the Commission that says the Commission will defer to a local ordinance, but I thought it might be helpful for us to walk you through the process for how we oversee events, and then leave it to you to decide how that might comport with the ordinance that's on the books in Watertown. In order for an event to be approved by the Commission, we first need to have a licensed promoter. And a promoter needs to make application to the Commission to be approved, and in doing so, he or she, or the company that's asking to be a promoter, is agreeing to comply with certain requirements. First, they must demonstrate financial responsibility, experience, character, and general fitness to oversee the type of event that they're applying to hold.
Jennifer, can you interrupt?
Yep.
How do you want us, if we have questions, do you want us to wait, or do you want us to interrupt you?
Jump in. I'd rather answer questions than give you a boring presentation, honestly.
While we go?
Yep.
Okay. I do have one question, if you could, before, because it gets to the point at which you're gonna, you are gonna be explaining, but how is it that this, this Commission got established? Because I do believe there was one before, it was a boxing commission or something like that, some point, and whether it was inactive, or whatever, but you have a knowledge of how the current Commission got established, how MMA got to become a part of that?
Yep. There was an Athletic Commission that was established during Governor Rounds' term, that the Commission has been established by the Legislature. That Commission was not appointed during his term, and therefore didn't take any action. In 2013, the Legislature reignited the desire to see some sort of oversight body for mixed martial arts and boxing, and so the South Dakota Legislature again reinforced the law and asked that Governor Dugard appoint the Commission. When the Legislature passed that bill, then Governor Dugard appointed the Commission. That went into effect in 2013. What was determined is, is that the law that the Legislature passed actually had a few gaps in it, where we needed to go back and rework and give some additional authority to the Commission to oversee and have some teeth to the events, or overseeing the events, excuse me. And so, the 2014 Legislature made some additional modifications, and on July 1st of 2014 is when the Athletic Commission essentially had the current powers that I'm talking about tonight. They've gone on to pass administrative rules that have really laid out the requirements for these events.
What all, type of events do you guys regulate?
We would regulate boxing, kickboxing, and mixed martial arts. To date, we have only had mixed martial arts events apply to be approved by us, and we've, we have approved and taken part in seven of those events, overseen them. So, again, to the promoter, just briefly, you have to have a promoter license for us to consider an application for an event, and inherent in that is, again, the financial responsibility of the person or corporation for the event that they're taking place. They have to ensure and meet a number of safety requirements, they have to comply with all of the city and state and any county regulations that might be in place regarding these types of events. They have to provide all of the materials, they provide the ring, they provide the gloves for the fighters, they provide the safety equipment that needs to be at the event. Then they need to provide insurance, in the amount of at least $1 million for the event itself. They have to provide at least $10,000 worth of insurance for each fighter who's participating for medical benefits, as well as death benefits, in the event that that's necessary. They have to have all of the fights that are on their card approved by the Commission at least five days before the fight, so they submit what's called a notice of contest or fight card to the Commission, and the Commission takes a look at the proposed matchup. And at the end of the day, if the Commission doesn't think that's a fair fight, doesn't believe that the records reflect an accurate pairing of people, the Commission reserves the right to say no to that particular fight. Again, they have to provide the proof of their ability to pay the entire purse of the contest, so that none of the participants or the officials are left unpaid, and ultimately have to file with the Commission a report regarding the event and the financial status of the event afterwards to determine their fee. Assuming that the person is approved as a promoter, then they need to file with the Commission an application for an event. And the event application, I actually have a copy, if it's appropriate to share. Again, what we look for when the, the person or the company comes forward and asks for a competition is that whoever is bringing it forward is a licensed promoter, that they're in good standing as a business in South Dakota. In all instances to date, it's been a corporation or a partnership that has asked to be a promoter, and so we check with the Secretary of State, we check with the Department of Revenue to make sure that that particular entity is in good standing with the state of South Dakota. And then, again, we have them sign off and verify and attest to the fact that they will meet essentially the requirements that I just outlined for you on the second page of that. After the event is approved, and we require those events to be approved ahead of time before the promoter can do any promotion of the event, so before there's any advertising, before there's any solicitation of fighters to compete, once the event is approved, the Commission does reserve the right to put conditions on it. So, we have required a number of promoters to put up a bond, so that we know that they can meet the financial requirements. We have required them to show proof of insurance sooner, as opposed to a couple weeks before, if we feel like that's an issue. In the case of an event held in Watertown, I would certainly expect that our Commission would require that a promoter provide a letter from the Council or your attorney that would indicate that the, the city of Watertown has interpreted your ordinance to allow it. We wouldn't want to have an event go forward without comporting with your ordinance. And then, day of, the actual event, so leading up to that, we ask for the proof of insurance, we ask for the card, we set the, the fights. And while all of that is going on, the fighters are all registering with the Commission. Fighters have to show a physical within a year, an eye exam within a year, blood test that shows they're negative for hepatitis A and B, as well as HIV, within six months of registering to fight.
Jennifer, can I stop just a minute?
Yes.
On the competition registrations, also a $1,000 fee that needs to go along with that, correct?
Yes. A $1,000 fee has to accompany the application, and then after the fight, the promoter is required to provide a financial statement to the Commission, and if they have gross revenue of, it would be more than $20,000, then the 5% fee kicks in. So, the minimum fee for a fight is $1,000, or 5% of your gross revenue, whichever is greater. And that fee's paid to the Commission. So, they have to have $1,000 down, essentially, and then if they owe the Commission, they have to pay that within 10 days of the fight.
Jennifer, you mentioned that they need to be a licensed promoter. How would we know, if somebody comes to us, whether they are a licensed promoter in the state of South Dakota?
Once we approve them as a promoter, we send them a letter. We don't actually issue licenses, but we do send the promoter a li, a letter that says you are approved as a promoter and your promoter number, you know, 2015-005, so that they would have documentation. We also maintain a list of approved promoters, fighters, and officials on our website, so you could access it there as well. And those registrations are good for one year, so every year, both fighters, officials, and the promoters have to renew their licenses with the Commission. Again, after the fighter is registered, so we're doing a, a check of the fighters to make sure that they are physically set to fight, then we look at the fight card to see if the fights that are being proposed are, in fact, fair. In most cases, we're able to find the fighters in a national database. If not, there are a number of websites that we can look to, to find statistics on particular fighters, so that we can look at their past records, we can look to see if they have any suspensions in any other jurisdictions, and then determine if we're gonna register that fighter. So, then we get to day of, we have an approved event, we have a list of fighters, we have an approved fight card. The night before a fight, the Commission conducts the official weigh-in, so the fighters have to weigh in, in our presence. We have limitations on what the weight differential can be between the contract and what you actually weigh in at, so we can't have someone who comes in grossly overweight and says that they're gonna fight at 155, that would be an unfair fight, so we would call that particular fight the night of the weigh-in. The actual day of the event, the Commission is onsite and present, we inspect the ring to make sure that it comports with all of the requirements that we have in administrative rule. We inspect to make sure that there's either an ambulance or EMT service onsite and dedicated solely to the event. If the ambulance leaves the location to transport someone, they either need to get another ambulance there, or the fight stops until we have an ambulance back onsite. There needs to be a stretcher, a resuscitator, or a defibrillator, oxygen, a number of medical requirements onsite, so we check for that. And then the fight itself is overseen by officials that are assigned by the Commission and registered with the Commission. So, the referee is someone that we assign, the doctor is someone that we assign, and we do require that it's a medical doctor who's licensed in the state of South Dakota and in good standing, that is ringside during the fight. That doctor also does a pre-fight physical at the weigh-in, so again, one last check on the physical condition of the fighter before we allow them to go into the ring. We also assign the judges, and we assign the timekeeper, so everyone who is present has been assigned and authorized by the Commission. They're not people that the promoter has handpicked. We do try to work with the promoter if there are, if there's personnel, if there's judges or timekeepers that they've frequently used. If they have the experience, we're willing to work with the promoter to cut down on costs, but the promoter is responsible for all of the costs associated with the officials that we assign. When you get to the fight itself, again, the referee and the Commission and the ringside physician, physician have the ultimate authority to stop the fight at any time, if we feel like medically it needs to be stopped, or if there's been some infraction by a fighter that would warrant pulling that fighter from the ring. We keep the official scorecards for the event, we take those scorecards and those decisions and any suspensions and report them to a national database, so that these fighters can't fight someplace again in an inappropriately short amount of time. Everyone who fights in a South Dakota Athletic Commission sanctioned event is suspended for at least seven days. That's if you win and you didn't take very many hits at all. Most of our fighters are suspended for 30 days, and if you have any type of knockout or head, head blows repeatedly, our doctors have been suspending fighters for up to 90 days. And so, the, the people who fight, again, one of the big components is, as we saw pre-Commission, a lot of people who are fighting every weekend. This will at least keep people from being able to fight in multiple venues, if physically that's not warranted. And then, again, to wrap up the process, after the fight, the promoter is responsible to be in contact with the Commission, provide a financial audit to us, so that we can determine what the final fee is. We do have the authority to audit those records, if we need to. We also have the authority to randomly drug test participants, if we want to. And so, those are random, as we move forward. But that's essentially our process. I don't know if I've helped or hurt, as far as explaining what we do.
Jennifer, I have a question about the officials. You said you handpick a referee and the judges. Do they have training, or what, what kind of a background would these people have?
All of the officials also have to register with us and meet certain criteria, so the referees that we've been using, who have registered with us, have multiple venue experience. We've used a gentleman who has gone as high as Bellator, which is, it's one step below UFC, trying to think of what that would be in another athletic analogy for you. We, we actually have two referees who have refed at that level. As far as the judges, we look to see how many different events they've judged at. That's more of a making sure that you don't have a controversy at the end, where you had somebody who threw the fight one way or another, 'cause the guy in the ring was his friend. What we found is that it works well to have people that aren't affiliated with the promoter, because they don't know who's fighting, they don't know the guy who's promoting it. But usually, the, the referees and the judges have had some sort of training, either through the ABC, which is the Association of Boxing Commissions, or through a mixed martial arts association.
Jennifer, how many events have, did you say you have, you have sanctioned or regulated since you came into existence?
The Commission has overseen seven events since July 1st of 2014.
Okay.
Three of them were in Sioux Falls, two were at Sturgis this year, and one was in Rapid City, and one was in Deadwood.
Okay. And comments, you know, results, anything out of the ordinary, I mean, that you'd care to report to us about any of those events?
No, I, I mean, I'll be very honest with you, I am not a mixed martial artist, as you can tell.
By me from?
I run associations and boards.
By me from the regulation standpoint, nothing?
Right. And what I would tell you is that I think I went in thinking that it would be a little bit harder to keep things under control, and at the end of the day, I would report to you that I think the promoters we've worked with have all been very good about making sure that the fighters that they bring are serious about fighting. I know that was one of the concerns before, you know, essentially, you had kind of the stereotype of the guy who pulled up behind the bar with the cage hooked to his truck and said, "Hey, anybody wanna come and fight?" I think because we've done all of this screening on the front end of the card, to make sure the fighters are legitimate and held the promoters to the standards we have, we haven't had any issues. We've had, I guess I would share one thing, we do have administrative rules that are going through the process right now of being amended. We're making some tweaks to the rules, which would actually increase some of the requirements that I talked to you about, just minimally. We realized that after we just had a year under our belt to figure out how to make it work. One of the things that is included is that the promoter provide us with a security plan. We haven't had any security issues. Every venue that we've gone to, the venue itself has provided security. But we have had instances, for example, at a, a event at the Sanford Pentagon, where we had a gentleman who was blowing a noisemaker, which sounded an awful lot like the horn. And, you know, we've had to go up and take away a noisemaker, or we had someone who threw debris in at Sturgis. That's really probably the wildest things have gotten from our perspective as a Commission.
Jennifer?
You had, you mentioned you suspend fighters after fights for specific periods of time for safety reasons. What interaction does the South Dakota Commission have with Nebraska, Minnesota, and others? Because I know these guys fight across different states.
We report to a national database, and the other Commissions are also looking at that, so if, if you were on a fight card, we would look you up in the database. We would be able to see how many fights you've had, where you're training, if they were amateur or pro fights, and then we would also be able to see where your most recent fights were, and if you have any suspensions. Generally, suspensions are for medical purposes, and that's why I said it's the doctor who is making a determination based on the condition of the fighter after he, he or she comes out of the, the ring. We also have the authority to use disciplinary suspensions, in the event that a fighter failed the drug test, or was not compliant with the Commission at some point in the process.
When you drug, drug test, you said you do those randomly. Do you do steroid, for steroids as well?
I can tell you what we're... I don't have the list of the specific drugs that are in the panel. I, I can get for, we're, we're drug testing for stimulants, non-prescription preparations, and any other prohibited drugs, and I'd have to look at the list that the, the Commission has put together of that.
Jennifer, I do have one, one last question from my perspective, and that is, are there performance standards off the mat, so to speak, for the approved fighters? I know it used to be, I think, back in the olden days of Golden Gloves and some of the other, some of martial arts, if, if something happened outside, you had to answer that, and you may lose your, your license, or whatever, to, to box, or to, to perform. Does the Commission have any rules in that regard?
If I'm understanding correctly, we don't do any type of background check on the fighter. It would be, you know, their performance and their behavior in other jurisdictions, or in our jurisdiction, directly related to the Commission. So, there isn't any type of background check to determine if, if a fighter has a criminal history. We don't do any of that, at this point.
Jennifer, according to your website, as of yesterday at least, it said there's no approved events or scheduled at this time. Are, are there some pending, coming up, or just any comments about that?
We actually, we're at the end of our year. We have a pending application for an event that the Commission would consider on Monday, next week, when it meets. Generally, what we've seen is, is that we have a promoter out of California that is promoting the events in Sioux Falls, and they're on an April-August rotation, and so they usually don't ask for their events until our January meeting.
One last question for anybody, otherwise we're gonna wrap this up. Jennifer, thank you so much. I, I do have two questions for you. The first one, I understand you're Patty Lindgren's daughter?
I am Patty Lindgren's daughter, yes.
And, and you were Dan Albertson's best student, am I correct in that?
I, I do think I spent a lot of time with Mr. Albertson, yes. I did. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We, we really appreciate it. Well, I think that answered a lot of questions that we had coming into this, into this meeting. The next one, Todd, if you wanna come on up here. This is interesting, guys, we have in front of you, everybody should have a packet on ADI, which is the airline, we had two airlines that gave us proposals to come to Watertown, South Dakota, and to fly. The first, the first one, before we get into ADI, I just wanna touch base on the very first one, 'cause it was put out there. Yeah, find the name of it here. Community Air is the first one. I think Ray, you put that on there, you were able to bring that up, their proposal? Okay. ADI, or I'm sorry, Community Air actually put in a proposal. We're not gonna spend a lot of time on this, folks, but they did give us a proposal to fly into Minneapolis. One of the problems that we have on this is this is not a, an airline yet. What they're hoping for is that they can get the $2.6 million and, and buy an airplane and, and hire pilots. The DOT does not recognize them as a, a, a commercial airline. So, I really think that we, we shouldn't spend much time on this particular one, unless one of you guys or gals think we should bring this one in. It was nice, because I tell you, they gave, they said if there's an emergency, the mayor can use that plane, which I think's pretty cool. Yeah, I kinda like that.
I'll fly for you.
Yeah? Well, there you go. Well, you could go to work for Community Air.
Yep, yep. This time of my life.
Okay. Well, anyhow, I, I don't think that we should spend a lot of time on this, I think we ditched this one and not be concerned with it. Would you agree, Todd?
That is correct.
Okay. So, the second one, and I believe we're gonna Skype in Mr. Bowman. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Mike Bowman.
Mickey Bowman.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mickey.
Mickey Bowman, yep. If you can bring him in, hopefully he's on the, on their fours. While you're doing that, I just wanna kinda mention that it's, it's an exciting time for Watertown, that, that we got a, a proposal in, and, boy, you know, you, you talk to these guys and you never know. Mickey, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right. Well, Mickey, I'm the, the mayor, this is Steve Thorson, I have the Council all here, and Todd, Todd Sire, and Mark Schroeder are here from the airport. Mark is the president. There you are. Good to see you.
Good to see you as well.
All right. We had a conversation the other day, we were, we were visiting about your proposal, and we're excited to present it to the Council tonight. So, what we'd like to do, Mickey, is go through this proposal, they, they've all had a chance to look at it, but we wanted to get it out to the public, so they know what decisions are being made and why they're being made. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Okay. So, Ray, can you get that, get that up there also, and still have Mickey on there? Perfect. So, Todd? Pardon me? Yeah, you've got the, you've got your presentation right there, don't you, Mickey?
Yes, I've got it in front of me, actually. I do.
Perfect. Well, I think we should just get started, and, and I'm not sure how you wanna do this, if you wanna go through the proposal for us, or if, or if you want Todd to do that.
Well, I can run through the proposal, that's, that's not a problem at all.
Perfect.
And then, I think, probably run through it, and then answer any questions you might have.
Perfect. And I would ask the Council tonight, if you, if you, whatever questions you have, please just write them down, and then, when it comes time, when we're all through the presentation, then ask our questions. We'll probably just go right down the line, starting with Beth, and work our way down with the questions, okay?
Sounds good.
Works for me. Okay, Mickey, you get going.
Okay, well, great. Well, first of all, thank you very much for, for hosting this evening. Very proud to talk a little bit about our proposal and what we think we can do for your community. I'm the Vice President of Airline Services for Aerodynamics, Inc. We are a company that's been around about 55 years. We primarily have been on the charter side of airline operations over that period of time. We are looking to now move into scheduled service. We actually have a pending case with the DOT for them to award us a domestic scheduled authority. Now, having said that, we already do hold a certificate of convenience. We are a fully certified 121 air carrier, and we, as I said, operate on the schedule side of the, of the operations today. And we've done so in the past, we've, we have done quite a bit of work for quite a few corporate shuttles, and some of those are detailed in the proposal that we'll be going through. First of all, our, our proposal, as it now sets, is what is termed a contingent proposal. And what that means is, when we decided to bid on your community, we looked at what other logistical needs there was for us, and what we felt would be the most viable opportunity for your community. And we came up with an idea that what we could do is produce a schedule that is basically flown over Pierre, South Dakota, on end to Denver. We have a, a number of opportunities, we believe, that exist today and will exist in the future, out of Denver, and Denver will certainly be what will be termed a focus city for us in the future. We could easily see ourselves with as many as 10 aircraft, serving a dozen or so communities out of Denver over the course of the next couple of years. Your community would simply be the first, one of the first of those communities. You may have read a little bit about ADI. This past year, we were involved with a bid involving several different communities, particularly in Nebraska. We had spoken with the folks down in North Platte, Kearney, and Scotts Bluff, along with Pierre, and were involved in some bids this past winter. Unfortunately, during that time period, we had a situation come up, we were in the process, the same process we're in today with the DOT back then, of trying to get our scheduled domestic authority. And the DOT took exception with the gentleman who was the owner of Aerodynamics. And last January, they came out with an order that basically said that we're going to postpone any work on your domestic scheduled authority until your ownership is replaced. And we commenced that process. A gentleman named Darrell Richardson, who I had the pleasure of working with for some number of years, was recruited, he came in as our new CEO and President, and we worked over the course of about six months, marketing and selling the airline, basically, finding new ownership. This last June, we did, in effect, make that transition. The company is now owned, it was acquired by a company that's simply called ADI Acquisitions, LLC. The principal in that is a Mr. John Beersley, who is a real estate developer out of the Portland, Oregon area. John and his wife happen to also own about 80% of Seaport Airlines, who is now our sister company. And Seaport is a 135 operator, they fly the Cessna Caravan, and are involved in quite a few communities across the US, providing essential air service. So, as we sort of go through the proposal here, what I'd like to do, I think that I went through the parts of the first several pages, and are, that does sort of bring us up to the ADI company overview. The next page really talks about ADI's airline successes, and specifically, some of the things that we've done in the past, that I think demonstrate that we are a more than a viable company, willing to do. company willing to do your scheduled service. Our most recent foray into scheduled service was actually flying for an international operator called Tortuek International. They were flying from, they wanted to fly from K-18 into Miami and ADI was the vehicle by which we accomplished that. So we actually furnished that. We also were involved in essential air service back here a couple of years ago. We were flying alternate EAS for the city of Manistee down to Chicago Midway Airport. And then prior to that, as I said, we've had several corporate shuttles we've flown in the past, including for Intel. We had a very large operation out there in California primarily, about 33 flights a day. We're operating at that time over a fleet of seven aircraft. And we posted some very good operational numbers for that entire project that lasted several years. And then prior to that even, we've had operations for Dow Chemicals. We, again, are primarily a charter company today. Having said that, what that means is that ADI has a real focus on delivering a quality product. And what we want to do is bring that same focus into the scheduled operations. We spend much of our day catering. For instance, we just wrapped up a charter today. We fly for two NASCAR teams. We fly their team members back and forth to all the races. We just got back from Phoenix early this morning and are preparing for the final race, which is down in Florida, coming up here in the next week or so. So something that we put a lot of credence on is making absolutely sure that we develop a quality product, that we run on time, and that we are hyper dependable. You know, we don't have, when you work in the charter environment, you don't have a backup. You can't fail. Failure is really not an option. So we have to make sure that we plan things meticulously and that we deliver. And that's simply how you survive in the world that we come from. I then included certifications, copies of our 121 air carrier certificate are there for you to review. And then the next page actually talks a little bit about our commitment for safety. Again, as I said, ADI has been around for 55 years and during that time, we have had zero accidents. So we put a phenomenal amount of stress on, we stress the safety of the operation. We make absolutely sure that our pilots are trained to the highest levels of proficiency. We have a vice president of safety and security on staff who reports directly to the president and it is sort of the focus of everything we do. The next page talks a little bit about some of the other advantages and these advantages we enjoy because of our sister relationship with Seaport Airlines. In this proposal, we would actually operate these flights as a code share and used our Seaport Airlines sister identity in order to market quite a few of these. And the reason we do that is because Seaport and their, in the scheduled service area, has gotten quite a start on us by saying they've already established themselves in the GDS systems. They sell under the K-5 designator code. They also have a phenomenal reservation system. They were the U.S. launch customer for the Altea reservation system that is marketed by Amadeus. This is the same reservation system that Southwest Airlines is actually adopting. They'll be moving on to it a little later this year. It's a system that has found a good amount of usage primarily in Europe and Asia prior to this, but we think that some of the technological advantages it has, you're going to see other airlines in the U.S. moving toward it as well. We are in the process of working on interline relationships through the Seaport franchise. They have existing relationships with both Alaska Airlines already and with Hawaiian. We have a, we're working to integrate Delta and hope to have Delta online by the first quarter of 2016. And we anticipate United and Delta, excuse me, United and American to follow shortly thereafter. When you're dealing with interlines, it seems like once you sign one, it lends the credibility that's needed for the other airlines to look up and pay attention, particularly the majors, and to work with you in order to make those things happen. So we feel very confident that we will have Delta online as an interline partner first quarter of Q1 and, as I said, United and American, hopefully shortly thereafter. The Altea system not only will give us full access under the Seaport identity and the global distribution system, you'll be able to buy the tickets out on any of the websites that you would, we would normally go through. We're talking about Expedia and Orbitz and Travelocity. So that will already exist. We are hopeful that once we establish our interline with Delta, we will have favored partner status, which will allow us to even list some of our flights on delta.com. So that's another major piece. And that's what Altea, the reservation system we're using, allows us to do. Through that partnering and the fact that the technology is to the level it is, we'll be able to offer through check-in and the sorts of things that some smaller airlines simply can't do. We've got a real commitment to community development. I, in my prior roles with a couple of other regional carriers, have operated some of the larger regional networks in the country involved in EAS. Most recently with Silver Airlines, we had 27 different contracts along the East Coast primarily with Silver Airlines. And one of the things that we stressed was community development toward that end in our proposal here. We've got about $12,000 set aside for marketing, about $1,000 a month over the course of the two years we're talking about. And we look to partner with the community. And by that, I mean we would become a member of the Chamber of Commerce, obviously. We would look to work with local entities for opportunities to market the airline service. And through our station personnel, we would look to be a real member participant in the local communities. So we like to have our people out and shaking hands and pressing the flesh. Not only that, of course, we would have our own sales team, primarily myself, out in the community as well, getting to know the local communities, participate in favor and hawking the service, getting the word out, which is going to be vitally important in building the ridership back. We've got a bit of a pricing, a little information on how we would price the product on the next page. What we're talking about here is we see the way there, I've done over my career, and I've been in the airline business now for 37 years, every time I've done any type of a survey where I've asked passengers what's most important, it's always, number one is fare, number two is usually reliability. So those are the two factors we have to stress. And what we'd be looking to do here is sort of base this whole marketing scheme around a $99 fare, one-way fare down to Denver. We think that that, once you get to that sort of fare level, you can then, because of what's happened at Denver, and by that, I mean the arrival of Southwest Airlines en masse at Denver, you now have the other low-cost carriers like Frontier and even Spirit there, keeping the local Denver fares very low. So we think by only having a $99 fare one way to Denver, you take that $200 on the round trip and you pair it with some very, very aggressive pricing out of Denver, I think that the folks from Watertown can enjoy a very good price level for the combined itineraries going through. Given the fare fact that the flight is going to operate over Pierre, we would also establish a $49 fare to Pierre. I don't think we'll exactly fill the airplanes with folks going down to Pierre, but given the fact that there should be some local ridership there, we'll keep a very low walk-up fare for anyone that might happen to just want, will take a quick ride down. The next piece of the presentation talks about the ADI fleet. We operate the Embraer 145. It's a regional jet. It seats 50 passengers. It has very good hot and high performance, which of course will help us at Denver. We have three of those aircraft currently on our operating certificate. We are in the midst of negotiating with our lease or to bring in a fourth aircraft, hopefully by the first of December. That's actually going to be a line spare, supporting our charter activity over the course of December, January, and February. And the Embraer 145 is a quality product. It has had one of the few airliners out there that has a perfect safety record. There has never been a crash of an Embraer 145 since the fleet's been in operation, since its inception back in 1995. The Embraer, the next page has some of the performance and specifications. You can see the airplane is a very comfortable product. It has a six-foot cabin. It is a two-on-one-side, one-on-the-other layout in the cabin. Important to note, of course, that because we are operating over 19 passengers, the Embraer 145 does have a flight attendant onboard. We'll have a flight attendant for every flight. Not only that, but of course, the Embraer 145 also has an onboard lavatory as well. The real crux of the proposal here is for the connections over Denver. And we talked a little bit about Denver here, the fact that Denver is the fifth-largest airport in the nation and that it has over 1,500 departures a day to about 180 cities around the world. So it is a very viable and strong hub. This past year, 2014, Denver did host about 53.4 million passengers moving through the facility. The next page talks about some of the non-stop destinations that are served out of Denver and you'll see that not only is the domestic service covered very well, you also have a wealth of international departures as well. And the international departures are actually seeing some of the greatest growth at Denver these days. Non-stop destinations are simply detailed a little better on the next page and secondarily, after that, we follow with a sort of a graphic of the Denver hub. We would propose to operate from an area that is on the A Concourse. You would see us down toward the bottom there. There are ground load gates down around gates 54 and 55 on the A Concourse in Denver. It's a very easy walk there. All the gates, again, are ground load so that our passengers can come up and ride the escalators and be right in the heart of the A Concourse. And from there, it's a pretty easy stroll down to the center of the Concourse where the trains are, the subway trains that link all of the terminals together. So I think regardless of whom you're connecting to, it's not going to be inconvenient at all in order to get out and to make those connections. The next slide sort of gets to the heart of the matter. It's our actual proposal. What we're talking about is 24 weekly frequencies, two round trips down over a Watertown to Pierre to Denver routing, two round trips Monday through Friday. There'd be a single round trip on Saturday and our round trip on Sunday. Again, that would be set at a $99 targeted one-way fare. The other thing that we have, we've looked at is that we know that particularly, it can get rather costly when you're making connections with carriers. Since we will likely not have a code share with one of the major carriers day one, we certainly will work toward that as a goal. We don't want to have to endure multiple bag fees. So for our segment, we're willing to waive bag fees for the first two bags. First two bags will be free. And so all that connecting passengers would pay would be the charges for the other airlines that we would be connecting the passengers to. We think that the two round trips with the jet service will give your passengers the connectivity they need. There is a bit of a draft schedule here. There is proviso or a statement down at the bottom, you'll notice, that says this is a draft. We would need to work through the final pieces of this and make sure we find out exactly where your community wants to go. And we can tailor the schedule a bit to make it work, but this gives you a good idea of what we're talking about here. And these are all local times so that departure out of Watertown at 7:16 in the morning would arrive into Denver at 8:30 Mountain Time and be there for the, there's a very large bank that departs at roughly 9:30 in the morning out of Denver. Similarly, in the afternoon, you'd have a departure at 2:48, getting in at 4 o'clock. And there's a very large departure bank at 5 on the outbound side. Similarly, the flights coming back out of Denver would be at 10:50 in the morning and at 5:35 in the afternoon. Those receive from very large banks at Denver that occur roughly an hour before that so that the passengers will have time to make those connections. The next page is the, sort of the financial stats of what we're proposing. It drills it down. We are having an assumed completion rate here of 98%. And we only, we used a relatively low passenger count relative to what we think we'll be able to drive or track in terms of passenger ridership. The 8,226 passengers we forecast on here, we basically got that from your passenger statistics that were in the bid from roughly a year ago. We think that the ridership should easily be able to resume to almost double that over the course of the two years, once we get back and get a well-priced and convenient and reliable service reestablished in the community. There's absolutely no reason we can't return to the prior levels of 13,000 or more employments that you had seen previously. For that, we are looking, we're requesting an annual subsidy from the DOT of $1,635,651. And at that lower passenger level, 8226, that does put us under the $200 cap. As again, I think that we could easily double that passenger statistic as we primarily move into the second year. First year, we'll have some fence mending to do. I think folks are natural skeptics. We'll have to come in and prove ourselves, but we are certain prepared to do that and have some marketing dollars set aside in order to make that happen as well. The final page, conclusion page of the proposal, does note, again, that a lot of what we hope to accomplish here will do hand-in-hand with our sister carrier, Seaport. A draft of one of the potential liveries that we've tossed around on the Embraers. But we think that we have a quality product. We are looking to move into the scheduled service. We think, working with the DOT, that we can easily make this happen. We think that the timing is such, that we've been told by a couple of folks, that the show cause order, allowing us scheduled domestic operations, is literally sitting on the secretary's desk for signature. So anytime we think that the show cause will come out, normally there is a two-to-three-week comment period, public comment period, and then the DOT would render the final award. So we are very hopeful that probably by the end of the year, we will have that scheduled authority in hand. We would be looking to commence this operation sometime in the March-April timeframe. I think that's prudent for us. It puts us past the bulk of some of the heavier weather. It just allows us that little bit of a step up in order to make sure that we do this and do it well. The thing we don't want to do is fail out of the gate. So we want to set ourselves up to succeed. So that would be sort of the timing we would be looking for. And with that, in a nutshell, that is our proposal. So I guess we'd be looking for questions at this point.
Thanks, Mickey. And I will tell you that I did talk to Dennis Devaney and Michael Gormes and they also agreed that the show cause is on the secretary's desk and they're waiting for that. What I'm going to do is a little different tonight. I am going to start with Beth. And I would ask that you just have like one question and then we'll just kind of move on and whoever doesn't get their question answered, we'll just keep moving. If that's okay with you, Mickey, how that goes. All right, perfect. So Beth, if you'd like.
Sure. Thank you very much. I would love the proposal and I'm just really excited to have the airline back here. I personally don't have a lot of experience with connecting in Denver. I'm always been used to going to Minneapolis or someplace like that to catch a flight. And I know probably a lot of people here in Watertown have too. I see that there's quite a few airlines in Denver. Obviously, it's a large hub. We have some time differences going to Denver. So I'm curious as to what you anticipate, for example, coming from Watertown and ultimately wanting to end up in Washington DC, New York, Orlando, Phoenix. I noticed that one of the layovers could be an hour, and my experience in Denver is an hour is really a tight way to catch your connecting flight. So I guess for the rest of the people in the community that may be watching this and who are also used to going to Minneapolis, can you help us understand or reassure us what a flight like that might look like? Watertown to Denver to, let's pick, Washington DC.
Well, again, I think that, I don't have all of the schedules in front of me, but I can tell you that we chose the draft times. And again, we worked toward the larger, what are called Omni Banks. And by an Omni Bank, I mean Denver, because of its mix of, you have, of course, a very large United hub. You have a large presence Frontier, who while they've sort of de-hubbed, they have a sort of continual hub philosophy in Denver. Lots of, lots of flights to quite a few of the larger communities. And then you have Southwest, who has become a major player in Denver over the course of the last two years in particular with flights throughout the day. So there are no real banks for Southwest. Their flights are spaced evenly. They make very good use of all of their, of all the facilities. So their banks are used consistently throughout the day. Now, we are, we are banked primarily around United times, trying to make sure we hit those big Omni Banks. So that when we hit an Omni Bank, you're going to have departures going to both East Coast and West Coast destinations. So our hope is that sort of within that, with the set arrival time in Denver, within, say, an hour and a half, you're going to be able to get a departure, whether it be to Washington, or to New York, or Boston, or LA, or San Francisco, or Seattle. We've tried to place ourselves at times of the day where we've got a good variety of destinations coming and going. Now, as we move through time here, as we get a little more specific about what the needs of your community are, we may be able to fine-tune that a bit. For instance, if the bulk of the traffic is flowing east, we may want to tweak, tweak the times a little bit to align the flight arrival and departures more closely attuned to East Coast departure banks, rather than going out. At the same time, there are Omni Banks, there are also purely directional banks, so that you have a cluster of, say, 50 departures that may depart over an hour-and-a-half period going specifically to the east or to the west. So we'll need to fine-tune that based on sort of the input we get back from you guys. But what I see it is a person able to check in at Watertown, hopefully, will have our interlines all in place prior to service. That's one of the reasons that we would want to wait to sort of the March-April timeframe. I think by then, we would have the interline ticketing and baggage arrangements set with the other major carriers, and primarily United will be the focus there. But I see a passenger coming out to the Watertown Airport, being able to check in, check their bag through, so that they don't have to worry about necessarily claiming it in Denver and running it down. Now, we have work to do there, and I want to point that out, that we already have all those agreements in place with Alaska and Hawaiian and soon Delta. I feel sure that we'll have United in that timeframe as well. But we want to make it a seamless experience for your passengers so that they can come in. We don't want them to have to be worrying about making connection. I'd like to make sure that the connection times are out there, a minimum of an hour, up to two hours. So there's plenty of time to make those connections, to get down, to get your United flight. There's no reason we shouldn't be able to have you check in through and have your boarding pass through to your final destination and vice versa coming home. So I think you're going to find Delta, or excuse me, you're going to find Denver a very good hub, again, fifth-largest airport in the nation. So you've got a lot of choices, a lot of opportunities, and I think we can derive a schedule that's really going to accommodate the needs of your community with your input.
Okay. Dan, have you got a question?
First of all, thank you very much for your interest in Watertown. I think that's a tremendous thing for us. Now, you mentioned it, and I just want to follow up on it, the reliability factor, because that has been our real bad issue here, the reliability. How are you going to make sure that you can fulfill these, all of these flights? And, you know, do you have the pilots? Is that going to ever be an issue for us?
Well, I would love to tell you that it would never be an issue. I would never make that leap of faith. I can tell you that we have not had an issue prior to that hiring crews, and there's a pretty simple reason. We, again, because of what we've done in the past and sort of the nature of the beast that we are, we have, we've always worked to attract high-level pilots. And in order to do that, we have a pay scale, quite frankly, that is much higher than most of the other regional carriers that are out there. Whereas some of our, some of our competitors have pay scales for a captain that might make $35,000 a year, our captains start off at $65,000 a year. Our first officers make $45,000 a year, opposed to about $25,000 a year for most of the other regionals. And surprise, surprise, what we found is that if you pay people well, you can find them. So our experience has actually been that we find pilots. Whenever we've advertised, we've had no problem filling our classes. Usually, and sometimes unfortunately, we source those pilots from some of the smaller regional carriers that are out there who don't pay quite as well. The other thing we have going for us, of course, is that we have the sort of equipment that frankly pilots want to fly. We're flying regional jets. Jet time, if I'm a pilot building a resume, jet time, having jet time in your logbook helps when you eventually work your way up to apply at American or Delta. So the combination of paying what we believe is a, is a good wage and giving them good living conditions allows us to attract passenger, or pilots, rather, when a lot of our competitors haven't been able to do that. Now, specific to part of the Denver operation, one of the things that we would do is that as soon as we have sufficient mass of a couple of cities signed up, we would hope to place a spare aircraft on the ground in Denver. And what we found in the past, that there's really no, we could do a lot of things in terms of building reliability. Obviously, we have to make sure that we're staffed correctly, and we have to have our mechanical support and logistical support in place, which we will. But nothing helps quite as much as having that spare airplane sitting in Denver so that when something happens, you can immediately swing that airplane in replacement and solve your problems over the course of the next couple of hours while the airplanes are out, making their way out to the station and coming back in. So that's, that would be our intent, is to establish a spare on the ground in Denver in support of the operation out there.
Bruce, have you got anything, a quick question?
Yeah, just my question is, and by the way, thank you for doing this presentation this evening. What is, what is the, where would you purchase fuel? Would you be purchasing that here in Watertown, or would you be purchasing fuel in Denver?
We would, given the stage coming out of Denver, and, you know, by the time we hop up to Pier and then come on into Watertown, it would be difficult, frankly, for us to fuel the ship round trip out of Denver. We would, we would, I might, would be, my intent is to spread our fuel purchases around. And that's assuming we can, we can get good pricing, obviously. But we use a fuel procurement service called Jet Fuel Strategies. They help us in trying to do our negotiations with fixed base operations that are out there. We hope to, by having, obviously, the one, the one thing that the regional jet does, when you compare it to turboprops, for instance, is it uses quite a bit more fuel. So it behooves us to have good agreements, but our intent would be to spread those purchases around. We would, I could see us buying fuel, frankly, in all three locales, but specifically in the hub and at the other end, which in this case would be Watertown, I think would probably bear the bulk of our purchase.
Very good. Thank you. John, have you got a question?
Nope. I think Beth and Dan covered what I was going to ask.
Okay, Don.
Yes, you've, obviously, I'm sure you've toured our facilities here. What are your comments on our airport, the facilities we have, be it the runways, the terminal? You've addressed fuel, but de-icing equipment, what's your overall impression of the airport?
Well, I think it's, you know, the airport itself is, from what we have seen, is quite serviceable. I, we will have to do some work in terms of de-icing equipment, obviously. We would have to make sure. We've got a 22, I believe it's 22.3-foot tail on the Embraer, and you have to have a boom on the de-ice truck that, that can clear that, obviously. So in terms of facilities, there's a bit of work to do. Holdroom, it could be a bit of a concern. I don't think that that's something that we're going to have a real problem with until perhaps into the second year when we get the ridership built back up. But overall, I think the, you know, it's a serviceable facility, and we can certainly make it work. And I see absolutely no reason that, you know, by forming a partnership between the airport and the carrier, we can't make it a win-win situation for everyone, including primarily the citizens of Watertown.
I would just add that I've done a lot of flying, and if you have ill intent, our airport is probably the worst airport to enter. Our security is very, very, very thorough.
Yeah, it is. Thanks, Don. Mike, have you got a question for Mickey?
I do. Mickey, what if, what if you're not successful in getting your agreements in place with United and Delta and such in regards to the, the booking of tickets and that flow through to where it's seamless, right? What if that's not successful? What happens to our quality service?
Well, at that point, unfortunately, let's say we failed at all of that. You would be looking for the passenger to have to purchase two tickets, and we would not have the ability to check bags through to the final destination. So that's certainly not what our intent is. We'll work very hard on taking care of those issues. But were it not, we would have to really focus on passenger education in terms of, we have a lot of folks that I suspect, because we've seen this in the past, we have a lot of folks who will probably connect with Southwest. Southwest doesn't interline. They don't interline tickets, they don't interline bags with any carrier, with the exception of Valera, some Mexican carrier I think they do some work with. But none of the other carriers in the US. So anyone wanting to take advantage of a Southwest flight, it's going to be two tickets. You would have to go on to our website to book our flights and have your tickets, and then you would do similar thing through Southwest. The, particularly with the businessmen, it's not as big an issue because what we find is a lot of our businessmen are the rollerboard crowd. They don't have a lot of checked baggage. Usually, they just got the rollerboard, their checked bag. We're not going to charge you for that. It's very easy to, to get your Southwest tickets online, for instance, if you're doing it, or with Frontier, who also doesn't interline any longer. It's, it's just a matter really of education. Unfortunately, if we, if they, someone wanted to check bags through in that scenario, they would have to go all the way into the main terminal, claim the bag, and recheck it, which is reason, reason number one for us to really focus on making sure those interlines are in place.
Okay, thanks, Mick. Glenn, have you got a question?
I guess maybe my question is directed as much towards our local people as to you, Mickey. I can't help but question that, that number of 8,226 passengers that your projections are based upon. And that's been quite some time since we were at a level that high. What happens if we don't reach anywhere near close to that number? What's that mean to the whole operation?
Well, I mean, first of all, we're coming in dedicated to working to get it back to that level. So that's going to be our real focus. Now, if that doesn't happen, obviously, there are two things that are going to be problematic if we can't get the ridership back. Number one is that the compensation would then exceed the, your cap of $200 per enplane passenger. The DOT has been making some real rumblings about enforcing that cap, which is a statutory cap. And potentially, if the, if the ridership didn't make it, you know, the DOT could potentially end your participation in the program. That Watertown could fall out of the program. I know there have been a, there's a short list of quite a few communities that the DOT has already warned about exactly that. So it's, you know, it's very important that we partner together to try to build that ridership over time. Now, having said that, I think that you would have an excellent case to apply for a waiver, particularly for the first year, stressing the fact that it is new service. We are looking to repair some of the, some of the ills of the former service. And the secretary has the ability to grant a waiver for that quota limit as it is. So I think that we can get there. Now, obviously, what it behooves us to do is to get out and really work the public, make sure they know that the service is there, that we're making it something that is reliable, something they can count on, doing advertising so that people remember again that Watertown does indeed have an airport, and there's no reason to have to get in your car and make those drives. So, you know, we are, we're very hopeful that the 8226 is something that is attainable fairly quickly. It is our intent to drive the numbers, as I told you, to roughly double that again. So that will be our focus.
Yeah, because even the ridership we've got, as bad as our service, there's still people flying. Randy, have you got a question for them?
No, most of my questions have been answered already. Just thank you for being interested in Watertown again, and look forward to.
Brad, have you got anything?
All my questions have been asked.
Okay. Bill, Bill, have you got any questions?
No, I think I got everything pretty well covered. Appreciate your investment here in Watertown, and I think that your business plan sounds like we're going to get there. Thank you.
I'm going to catch heck, Mickey, because I might ask you two questions here.
Sure.
The first question is, what if Pier doesn't get onboard? What happens?
I'm sorry, I didn't, didn't catch that.
Let's say Pier does not get onboard with us, with Watertown because your proposal includes Pier. What happens if Pier does not put ADI on?
Then it is, it is a moot point. This is a contingent bid, and the definition of a contingent bid is just that. Our bid is entirely contingent upon Pier getting onboard and endorsing, endorsing us. And I've had a couple of conversations. I know there was a, another meeting this past Monday night.
There was.
With the Air Service Committee up there, and Mike Isaacs, the airport director up there, brought everyone up to speed on what was happening here. We had Pier's support prior to our problems back in January of this year. We felt we were moving along rather well with the whole thing. Mike and Mayor Gill and the folks on the Air Service Task Force up there seem solidly in our corner. So, you know, toward that end, when several of the other communities took an interim 18-month contract with Great Lakes, Pier refused to do that. Technically, their contract is still open, and they're just being, Great Lakes is serving Pier because of hold-in orders. No long-term contract was never signed by Pier. So we believe that that bid is, is still an open bid. We have our standing, our standing bids in, and we believe that the DOT has the ability at any time to go ahead and award that bid.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think in talking to Dennis and to Mike, that's exactly what they've been saying. The other question that I might have is, would you consider doing some charters out of Watertown?
Well, yes, absolutely. If we've got the, the time on the airplane to do it. We don't want to do anything that's going to compromise the integrity of the service, obviously. Having said that, we only are going to be flying half-days on Saturday and Sunday. So there certainly would be the possibility to do something at that level for that. And, you know, once we get our contacts with folks in place, excuse me, once we get our contacts with folks in the Watertown area, I would love to be able to do some charter out of there. Charter, again, is what we've done first and foremost. So it's something that we would love to do, again, but not at the expense of the integrity of the scheduled service. But yes, we would be looking to do charter as well at some point there.
Any other questions that you might have for them? Well, Mickey, I want to thank you for being here. It was, it was a great proposal, and I think it was very, very informative. Was there something, Mark?
I do have a couple of questions.
Use your speaker and state your name.
Yes, Mickey, my name is Mark Schroeder. I'm the president of the Airport Board here in Watertown, and we looked over your proposal last Tuesday. And we looked over your proposal last Tuesday, and we thought it was a great proposal. You answered some questions. One of them was about the pilot problem that they've had to deal with. Almost makes me want to try to get a job with you, but I'm going to be 65 in January, so I don't think that's going to work. But anyhow, the other thing that I was wondering about is, what do you look at? And our experience here in Watertown for years, for 45, 50 years, has been, we've had service mainly to Minneapolis, and people may be expecting that more. And that's something, I think that, is that something down the road that you might be looking at after the first two years, or it's something that's never going to come up?
No, I, I think that certainly, that's something we would look at potentially after the first two years. Again, you know, our focus is getting, is logistically trying to pull together a system that works logistically.
Sure.
So Denver is really going to be our initial focus city. Having said that, two years down the road, the ability to spread our wings to a second focus city. Believe me, Minneapolis has not gone unnoticed to us in terms of some of the opportunities that are presenting themselves out there right now. We've, we've been looking very hard at that. Again, as I said, we've actually been working very hard with our friends at Delta. We feel very confident that we'll have, that Delta will be our first major airline or legacy carrier interline. We hope to have it in place by the first of January or so. So there are some potential synergies with Delta that could be realized over the, over the Minneapolis hub, I think, potentially down the road. So never say never. I think that Minneapolis is something, it's not going to be something we'll look about, you know, look for probably in this first two years, but certainly something we would look at beyond that point.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, we got to get moving along.
One more thing. Glenn, you mentioned the ridership problem, trying to retrieve our ridership, and they've offered to come up with $12,000, $1,000 a month. And we, we went through the process of, you know, requesting a grant, $150,000 grant for promotion and marketing. That's the kind of thing that we've got to do. We've got to bring these people back. And I'm not talking about just Watertown, I'm talking, within an hour's drive of Watertown, you've got to go after that, those people. Those were the people that were flying out of here before, and that's, that's what we need to do.
And one of the ways that we will do that, if you guys remember, we did go out for the $150,000 grant for marketing of the airline. We really didn't have an airline at that time. They said no.
They're not going to prove it if you don't have an airline.
Yeah, so we will go back for that marketing plan of the $150,000 grant to help subsidize their, their marketing plan if it so happens.
Adding that, I'm sorry, adding that together, those together, that's probably multi-year.
That's huge, yeah. Thank you very much for being here, and the council will make a decision tonight on the, on the council meeting in just a few minutes, and we'll let Todd give you a screen and let you know what's going on.
Simple, simple. Thank you so much for the opportunity. We, we really appreciate it, and we think that we've got a solution for your air travel problems.
I believe you're right.
And we're, we're very hopeful that we'll be your selection.
We're excited. Thank you very much. Bye.
All right. Have a good evening.
Okay, is there anything, Todd, you wanted to share with us quickly, or not?
As far as your options, you can recommend ADI. We can actually reject all bids and go back out for bids. And that's our, you know, that's kind of a long shot. We don't, you know, you don't want to bite the head off the snake that's already, that's already been on us, so they might not bid again. So those are your two options that you could, you could do tonight.
Okay.
Todd, can I ask, Mayor, can I ask Todd a quick question?
Sure.
What, what was our maximum ridership employment when we had Delta? Like at our best level? What were we doing a month?
A month?
No, for the year. It was, it was $10,000.
For the year, we were at $17,000. We had our million dollar, we got our million dollar entitlement funds two years.
And how long ago was that, Todd?
2002, '03. And that's both ways. That's in and out.
Right. So I, I don't think he's, I don't think he's out of line.
When he says 8,000, it's actually 4,000 employments, 8,000 passengers, as I call it, in the airline. Correct.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, folks. I think at this time, I will adjourn the meeting. We'll be back here at 7 o'clock for the council meeting. Thank you.